June 8th, 2021, 6:10 PM. Want to call to order the town council meeting for today. And we do have a quorum. Five council members are present, and the mayor is nearby. So with this being said, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Morse has made the motion.
Mr. Morse has made the motion. All in favor? All right. Motion carried unanimously. So.
Do we need to go ahead and make these motions to bring the two gentlemen in now? Or is that...
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Get a motion.
I need... Thank you. Better reminder. I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion by show of hands. All in favor? That's unanimous. But, um, okay. This time, I'm gonna call the regular town meeting to order. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. At this time, if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
To fly the United States of America to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Thank you. Have you seated? Okay. At this time, since I can't read anything. Right? Okay. Are there any motions? Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's meeting? Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor, um, we had to put... You've got one item, remove item 9C. The applicant has withdrawn the request for now. We've also added three minor items. One, they're primarily housekeeping items. First item deals with care funding that you did, I think, several months ago. And as we told you two weeks ago, we're expecting to receive our American Rescue Funds. And so we need to have a resolution and ordinance approving so we can accept that money.
Okay.
Those are the items that we're proposing to be adjusted.
So, council, will we be... Request to remove item 9C and add the two housekeeping items that Town Manager's requested? What should...
What are the number for them?
Yeah. What... Where are they under? Mr. McLean, would you like to put them?
Yes, sir. Um, you're removing 9C. You're adding item 11D, item 10D, and item 10E. Uh, this came up at the last minute, and I think Kathy has given you all those documents to support those items.
Agenda should have them on there.
You said 11D? And 11E?
There's an 11E.
So 11?
It was 10.
11D, 10D, and 10E.
Okay. 10D, 10E.
And we're removing 9C.
I got you.
Correct.
Everything should be on there, are they, gentlemen?
Yep.
Get it right.
That's correct. Okay. There's no questions? Any other additions and deletions? If not, I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
The amended agenda. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion by show of hands. All in favor? Let the record show, that was unanimous. Okay. Okay. That brings us to presentations. Dude Systems. That would be you, Adam.
I think they've got the best company name out of any of us in a long time. So... So this is our new work order system. Um, if you saw on Facebook and the town's website, I think, a couple of... Maybe a week ago or two weeks ago, we put out a video to show this new work order system and what it is. So we're just gonna run through a quick demo really quick, just so y'all can see how it works from the citizen side, and then how it works from our side for what we can see and what we can do. At any time, if you have questions, ask me. I'll answer those. So on the town's homepage, you see the icon there that says Submit a Request. When you click that icon, it will then take you to another page. And that is this page that... Well, kind of this page that you see right here. It'll actually take you to... I can't go backwards. To a login page. If you don't have a password yet, like if you don't have a username and password, you just sign up for an account, just like you sign up for anything. What that does is that allows you to track the request. It allows you to get emails about the request as it works through the process. And then it also allows you to see every request you've ever submitted in the system. This is any citizen, or y'all, or staff, or anybody that was to ever submit a request. So if you want to submit a request, once you get to this page, you have two different options. You can enter it in by actually typing in a physical address to enter in the request, or you can actually pick a location and drop a pin. So I'm gonna zoom in here. So you can see this is Town Hall. Town Hall sits right here. This is the driveway out front. Um, let's just say there was something right here. So I click. I put the pin there. You see it says Create a Work Order. So I'll click on that. You see it says What's the Issue? So in here, I can pick whatever the issue is. Uh, let's just say it was a dead animal. So I can pick that request.
A dead squirrel.
Do what?
A dead squirrel.
There you go. We get... We do get those. So then, from there, if I had... If I had taken a picture of it, I could put that there. If not, I then click Submit a Request. Oh, what's the work needed? Sorry. I gotta type in what's the work needed.
Yeah. Removal of that squirrel.
Please, remove cat. The cat chased the squirrel. The cat actually got hit, not the squirrel.
All right. Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome. Submit the request. All right. So now you can see the request has been submitted. So now I'll go to actually what I see in the work order system. So this is the background side. This is what we see, Pam and I in the office, and then all the guys in the field. So you can see that request just came in. It's request 196 right there for a dead animal. So we click on it. All that information is in there. Now, I can move that request through the system depending on what I want to do with it. If I want to assign it to somebody to go pick it up, I put it in progress. They go out... Then a request goes to our crews that are out in the field, and they get their request, and then they can do that work. Let's say that it was a pothole, and it needed to be investigated. We would put it under Investigation Required. That would then get it sent to the correct staff members that do those investigations. They would then go do those investigations. Once they were done doing their investigation, they would type more information in there. They would put pictures in there. They would do stuff like that. The request, when they hit complete, then goes back to us to then put it to a crew to actually do the work. But what the good thing is, now the crew knows what they're looking at. They know how much work they think that it's gonna take for them to do the request other than just, we have a pothole. We all know a pothole can be as big as this podium, or it can be as big as the table that Mike's sitting at over here. So it can be any level of those. One other thing that we can do with this is, if I go to the map... If it'll pick up. Oh, there we go. So you see all of those... I gotta turn off some layers. But you see all those dots? The blue dots and the red dots and different things? So those are different requests that have come in. What those are is... Could be stormwater. Stormwater's blue. I just know that right offhand. Um, you could have potholes. You could have different things. So then, when we zoom into a certain area... We can click on these... The guys and the crews can click on these and see who the work order's assigned to. So I know that one's assigned to Ryan. It's a pothole, and where the pothole is actually located at. We can click and see what these other ones are around here. So there's another pothole. So now we can start to group work, so we don't go out and do a single pothole. We can budget our time better and go do all these potholes at one time, rather than going out and filling one, and then coming back to the shop, and then realizing, oh, we have another one that we should have done that's a block away. We can start to dictate what we're doing and where we're going to do that work. Um, it just gives us a lot more information and the ability to track work orders. We can also see now, over time, how many work orders we've done of which type. So you saw, there's been 191 requests. We've been only running this process internally. It went out to the public about, like I said, about a week and a half or... Week and a half ago. Um, we've been running it for the whole month of May. So in that time, we've put in 191 work orders. On our end, we can also do one other thing, which is repetitive work orders. So park inspections. It'll generate a new work order every week for the guys in the field to do the park inspections. Um, elevator inspections here in this building, bathroom cleanings, different things like that. It'll regenerate those work orders. We don't have to type them in every time. So we're able to track work order type, location, and what we're doing. We can also track hours. The guys have to put in the hours they worked and what... Pictures of the completed work. That way, when the citizen asks what was done, we can go right to it and see what was done. Any questions? Yes, sir?
That seems like a great system. I'm sure there's a bunch of computer programmers and long hairs sitting around, dude, this is great. But, uh, my question is, is while this is great online, is I'm just wondering, do we still have, you know, systems set up for people that are not computer savvy, considering, you know, do we have a live phone call? They gonna put this in?
Yep.
Because, you know, people my age took typewriter class in high school. So...
So if...
I mean, in Lions Club, different... You know, shirts. We got a lot of people don't even have a computer. So, you know.
So I'll tell you...
We'll make sure that they're didn't taken care of.
They are.
My mom wouldn't want to fill in a request online. She could, but she wouldn't want to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yep. They could call at the front desk. They could do it. Or we can do it. Pam can do those requests. Yep. Now, the one thing that they would not get is be able to track their project through the system. So if you enter in your email address...
Don't worry. They'll call me.
Okay.
I'll have to call and try.
Adam, um... Can you go to the App Store and download the app?
Yep.
Onto your smartphone?
So... Yes and no. Yes, you can. It actually works better if you use our website.
So let's say that someone... Someone reports a pothole, and it's not on an Indian Trail property.
Yep.
Is that information somehow then forwarded to the state?
So what we are... What we'll do on our end is we'll deny the request. The citizen will get an email. Now, we have to type in information. So Pam and I have already talked on our end, because we're the ones that'll accept or deny them. So when we deny it, the information that we type in, we have it... We're pre-typing that information, and we'll copy and paste it. The email that the citizen will get back, your request was denied by the town due to it not being on a town-maintained street. You can contact NC DOT at this phone number in this location to let them know. And then what we do is usually about once a week, we send a list of potholes and different things to DOT that are their request.
Uh, one other question is, um, so somebody submits a work order request, and you guys have prioritized it. Is that information in real-time fed back to the person so that they know where you are and, you know, where their request is?
Yep. So each way through the process, every time it jumps a step, they will get an email that it's moved to the next phase. So when it comes in to us, when it gets approved, they'll get an email that it was accepted and approved. When it goes, if it needs investigation, once it's investigated, they'll get an email it has been investigated. It's a pending work order. Then we'll move it to a crew. They'll get an email that it's with that crew. Then, when it's completed, they'll get an email that it's been completed, and if they have any questions, to give us a call. Now, the only thing we don't give is I... We are not at the point yet that I can give you timeframe parameters for how quickly we will do work. So I can't say it's a pothole, we'll do it in two days. Or it's a stormwater project, we'll do it in two weeks. I'm just not at that point. I want to get there, but I'm not there yet.
If I could add, Adam, and that was one of our long-term goals, as we develop a history and a process and refine it, then hopefully we'll get to a point where we can project within a certain period of time. The other thing I'd touch on is with the NC DOT, we refer the citizen, but we also notify them ourselves.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah. Is there any cost to this system?
There's not a cost for the citizens. There is a cost for the town. It's been budgeted for in next year's budget already. It's a yearly contract. The data is ours. If we choose to go with a different company, which we... There's different companies out there that do this work. We could choose a different company every year if we wanted to. Wouldn't suggest that, but it is... It is an option. You would lose a lot of your past information.
And this is a North Carolina corporation?
Yeah, they're out of carry.
Well, it looks like there'll be some, maybe not hard-dollar savings, but there will be some soft-dollar savings. I'm sure. Okay. Very good.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Adam.
Always.
All right. Just a note that the mayor had to step out for a little bit, so until he comes back, I'll sort of run the meeting. Um, go on to public comments. Um, we have nobody signed up for public comments, so I'll open and close public comments. And...
Sometimes he opens it to the floor if no one signs up, but that's your discretion?
Oh, okay. Well, then, go ahead and... Yes. Mr. Chang, approach the podium. State your name, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Evening, council members. Members of the town, Patrick Chang, 106 Pine Lake Drive. Uh, if you recall last meeting, I was here, and I spoke about the diversity that I'm seeing in the town, and also, obviously, at Town Hall. And I planned to come back as much as I need to try to drive this message home, because after the meeting, I sent the entire council an email, and I didn't get any response. Uh, I... The email I sent was a link to the Racial Alliance, which I mentioned was part of the municipalities in North Carolina. And I'm not sure, again, if anyone in the town of Indian Trail is aware of that organization. So what I'm... What I'm here to do is to continue to bring in members of this town that I see and that I know that are here, both as residents and as merchants. So what I'd like to say tonight and bring to you is that I am willing, and the last time I came in, I mentioned the fact that when my wife first started working here, she was calling on me to do interpreting and translations for Spanish speakers and business people that came into town. So I'm willing to take it to another level, to say that as more merchants come into town, that Town Hall is meeting, I'm willing to make available my resources that I know for people who speak Arabic, who speak Spanish, who speak Vietnamese, who speak many of the Indian languages that are present now, and there are quite a few merchants in town of that nationality. So again, I say that to say that I just make myself available, and I'm willing to talk to anybody on the council furthest. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. How many languages do you speak?
No, no. It's not that I personally speak it, but I have the resources and I have those connections.
I got you. I didn't have to understand you spoke like... I didn't... What's the seven languages? I thought it was good.
No, not that many. But, um, again, I have the resources to make those people that are native speakers of the languages that I mentioned available to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll close public comments. Council, any feedback from you? Or can I close council comments as well? Yeah?
I, for one, as a council member, did not ignore the email. Um, I read it and the link, and appreciated it very much. However, sometimes when, um, issues are brought up that cross certain boundaries, it keeps... It keeps... It sometimes prevents people from providing input. So, um, I have been advised by our attorney to not speak on this matter. That's... But I wanted that to be shared. Thank you.
I don't speak Japanese, but my wife does. I just want to say that. So if you're gonna bring people other languages, maybe get some interpreters. So anyway, that's all I'm gonna say. I can't... I like him. I can't comment, so... But thank you.
Any additional comments?
No. I think Jerry spoke for all of us, so...
All right. So thank you. I'll close the council comments. And, um, Captain James, law enforcement up there. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. The, uh, very quickly, you got in front of you the May report. Very quickly, 215 reportable instances this last month, down just a hair, actually, by nine cases. So anyway, it's going in the right direction. 380 business checks total, and 3,003 preventative patrols, with 5,682 total events. We're seeing an uptick in disturbances and domestic violence cases, or domestic violence calls, maybe not so much domestic violence cases, but a lot of it's got to do with the weather and school getting out and the, uh... And disturbances with just, you know, people calling in on kids and whatnot around the pools and the open areas. 105 crashes in town last month. Those are... Down just slightly, but also 15 of those had injuries in them, which is also down. So we're still working in the right direction, with no... None that I know of or could find today that had serious injuries out of those crashes in them. Our two traffic rent guys, 250 stops over the month of May, 119 warnings, with 342 total traffic and criminal charges for the month. And if you've got any questions about what you got in front of you there, I'd be glad to answer for you or anything else.
Any questions, council? Mr. Morse, any questions from you?
I just wanted, what is test, please, limit these?
Oh, that's the new MDT systems? When they put up... Strike up a new car? When they're checking the, uh... Actually getting connectivity to our net system. They don't want the officers actually doing that. So when they test them... So we got... We actually had to put three new cars into service this past month. One of the... One of our cars actually hit the test button that tested that net button, so it reported it on there.
Mr. Barber?
Oh, yeah. We got the wonderful town parade coming up, and I know the Sheriff's Department's big on that. And I know at the last Lions Club meeting, I was kind of asked to bring this up. I don't know if it's doable, but after the parade's over, you know, everybody goes down the food line, but then everybody wants to kind of come back to post office drive. Would it... And just... All I'm asking is, is they'd like for you to consider, I don't know if it's doable, to keep the road closed for everybody to come back, if possible, if you get with Hayden. I don't know if that's even doable, but I just...
I'm gonna talk to Hayden about it. What my suggestion was, when we were talking about this, Sergeant Rushton is actually putting the plan together for that, is I was wanting to bring him back up South Ford, just loop him back and hope him by the length to be already passed.
I'm just bringing on half of the Lions Club. You know, they line everybody up down there.
I got you. We'll work it out. We'll get you back.
And I'll be out there as usual, so, you know. So that anyway, I just, if you don't mind...
Just throw me some candy.
Some to consider. Thank you, Hayden. Hayden was here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen? All right. I do have a question. Um, first, our school is out, and I know last year with COVID, resource officers were on your staff because school was out.
Right.
Our school is out now. Do you also have some of these resource officers assisting you?
No, sir.
Not this year?
Not this year. We've got summer school running in several of the schools, and also, they have been tasked with working down in our detention facility.
Okay.
Because we're... They're having to take up for staff that they're putting through school at the same time.
Okay.
So we don't have anybody on staff this year.
And then the second question, you mentioned something regarding the domestic violence numbers. Are you saying that it's up, or you're seeing an increase because school is out, you're thinking?
The disturbance numbers.
The disturbance numbers.
Disturbance numbers. I don't want to blame it solely on the schools being out. But a lot of it is just kids walking down the street.
So that's what it is? It's not domestic from somebody?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Right.
Okay. All right. And thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Captain James. All right. All right. Um, consent agenda. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda?
No, sir.
If not, I'd like a motion to approve. Mr. Head has made the motion. All in favor? Motion is carried unanimously. And I want to open up, I guess, the public hearing, or we have a public hearing for the continued budget, public hearing, and consider Budget Ordinance Number 210608-356. Ms. Walter? All right. So I guess, uh...
Yes.
Mr. Town Manager?
I'll just make a couple comments. We've been working on this for quite a while, and I appreciate everyone's participation. I think we've had a good budget session. The numbers you have before you tonight, you've also got the budget ordinance we would ask you to approve. Question came up about our capital improvement plan, which included land for public works and things like that. Those are not included in the item. We will spend time this summer looking at a five-year CIP. So we would propose to keep the tax rate the same at 18 and a half cent, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. And if I can't answer it, I've got a first-class finance director behind me that can.
So any questions? I will start with Mr. Head.
I have none.
What about you, Mr. Morse? Mr. Cohen? Any questions?
No.
Mr. Cohen, no. Thank you. Mr. Barber?
No.
How about you, Mr. Morse? No. Um, one quick question. Ms. Quinn, did we receive any comments from the public in regards to the budget? All right. All right, so let the record show that we have no comments from the public.
And just confirm that there's no one in the audience who might like to speak tonight.
Oh yeah, sorry, yeah. Anybody in the audience wish, huh? I did, yes.
It's continued from the last.
It's continued from the last meeting. But, um, did anybody, is anybody in the audience here to speak tonight in regards to the budget from a public hearing standpoint? So, nobody's here. So I'd like to close the public hearing on the budget, and the manager's requested a vote on the budget ordinance.
And you should, you should have a motion sheet before you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the bud, budget ordinance number 210608-356.
Mr. Barber has made the motion, all in favor. That is unanimous. So this budget ordinance has been approved and passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. D's Hope Montessori Conditional Rezoning Request, ordinance number 210608-357.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of council. Good evening. Our final public hearing for tonight is the Conditional Rezoning 2020-0101, Hope Montessori located at 112 Woodland Road. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. This request is to rezone approximately .53 acres from single-family residential SF1 to conditional zoning single-family residential overlay Village Center District. Sorry, that's a, a lot to fit in there. The applicant, Leanne Watson, is requesting to convert a former daycare into a preschool. Here you have an aerial view, and you can see this is one parcel off of Old Monroe Road, but located on a residential street. Here are existing site photos. They show the home. It's somewhat dated, but there are plans to renovate the structure once the applicant gains approval. The existing zoning map in the light beige shows the existing SF1. In hearing the concerns of neighbors and also being consistent with the surrounding, staff is recommending the SF1 Overlay Village Center District instead of modifying the zoning to an institutional or commercial use, and this helps preserve the integrity of those residents that are further down Woodland. You'll see the dark purple burgundy color shows that this area is set out to be mixed use. And this .3 acre parcel contains a structure that housed a former daycare and is being proposed as a preschool once again. The land use helps further the mixed use concept contained within the comprehensive plan, but the SF1 helps to be consistent with the immediate area. And the chart above you on the screen displays the surrounding land uses, which is primarily single-family with the exception of the recently approved Senior Living project. This is the concept plan. It shows how the site will be modified to accommodate the additional traffic, parking, required buffers, and the playground area in the rear. The applicant has provided the following drawing to demonstrate the improvements she intends to make, such as new windows, doors, paint, and new egress requirements to be met as well. So let's talk about traffic a little bit. Traffic and stacking of vehicles has been a concern for the town, and in fact, the reason that you see the 2020 CZ number attached to this instead of a 2021. This project has been delayed due to the applicant working with NC DOT on a technical memorandum and ensuring that cars will not back up into Old Monroe Road. The technical memo determined a maximum of three vehicles will be stacked on site and unloading children in the carpool line at one time. The chart displays the estimated number of drop-offs and pickups with timeframes. So Woodland is surprisingly an NC DOT roadway. Of course, we know Old Monroe Road is as well, so we were just help, helping the applicant facilitate this with NC DOT. Community meetings were held on May the 4th, 2021. One citizen participated via Zoom. Concerns included traffic and cars backing up into the residential street waiting to exit on Old Monroe Road. This project's located in the Old Monroe Village, and is, this redevelopment is consistent with the future mixed use as recommended in the comprehensive plan. The proposed plan for the school is consistent with the village plan and the existing makeup of housing stock along Woodland Road, and will redevelop the structure into an aesthetic addition to the neighborhood. This project's also consistent with economic development goals by creating a different tax base and supporting varied employment opportunities. In summary, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and promotes the goals of the comprehensive plan in the following areas: quality of life, land use, and economic development. Staff suggests the conditions listed within the packet, and I'm not aware of any public comment that's received for this item, but I will defer to the clerk to confirm. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is present as well. Thank you for your time.
I have not received any comments. You can, you can open public comment and see if the applicant would like to speak.
Yeah. Is the applicant here?
I am.
Yeah. Would you like to come up and speak?
I'll answer questions.
Oh, sure. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? You do, Mr. Moss?
Yeah. My biggest concern is, what Brandy addressed there was the traffic. So how, how do you keep the cars from being in the roadway? How do you stage that? And how do you guarantee that, that it doesn't impact?
I have been doing Montessori education for 25 years and have done carpool lines at the two previous schools that I've worked at. We, we have a carpool line where at least three cars can get into the driveway at the ti, at a time. We unbuckle the child from their car seat, get them out. We have asked parents to say goodbyes before they pull into the driveway, and it's probably a 30-second transaction. I have never had a problem with cars pulling out. I'll have staff outside, you know, two or three staff members getting children out of the cars at the same time so that the flow keeps going. Part of my plan is to have a policy with the parents explaining that we cannot back up on Woodland, and that they need to be in agreement with that before registration, registering for the school.
If this is approved, is, does the town have any recourse if this becomes a problem to eliminate the cars? Not saying that you, you won't, but let's just say you have some parents that just are hard-headed, and they, and you've got cars in that roadway. How do we, how do we resolve that?
One solution that I have is the, the street is a cul-de-sac at the end, that the family, the car can, you know, if it, if it looks like it's gonna back up, they can drive down to the end of the street, turn around, and then enter from the left.
And how many daily pickups, or say morning pickups and drop-offs?
I'll have 53 students, probably about 10 of them will be siblings, which I did not account for in there. Montessori schools tend to have a very open drop-off time, so we'll have drop-off from either 7:00 or 7:30 until school's starting at 9:00, so it's very staggered. And the same with pickup. And once pickup starts, we'll do a carpool line at the end of the school day, but have aftercare, you know, until 5:30. At that point, parking spaces will be freed up because teachers will have left, and those parents, you know, come two or three at a time. And so there'll be ample parking for them to park and then come in and get their children.
And the staff didn't receive any concerns from the neighbors regarding the increased traffic or anything like that?
We did have one citizen who spoke, attended the community meeting, had concerns more about potential parents trying to attempt to make a left onto Old Monroe Road. I think people realize that's not a good idea after a while, but there are certain people that, that do make that attempt. There was discussions in planning board about, about this issue as well. Last time I spoke with the, the gentleman who attended the community meeting, he felt comfortable, and, and this was appropriately noticed, so he's certainly aware of this meeting tonight. Just quickly to, to go back to your, your first question of whether the town can, you know, hold Ms. Watson liable, because these are NC DOT roadways, unless Ms. Walter has other ideas, I'm not sure how we have any leverage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The, um, I don't know, I know people send their kids to Montessori. It seems like a good school, and it does seem like a skinny street a little bit there, I know, but since it was a daycare there before, I think maybe that's why we only got one person who said anything about the traffic, because they're probably used to the traffic with it being a daycare. And if, round the corner there, if you remember, you probably don't know, but, I don't know, what's there, what's there now, but it used to be a video store there, and after a video store, there was a daycare there. So it didn't seem to impact the traffic right in that area too much on import, you know, though you grew up here. Remember Sarge's Video Store, don't you?
Video store.
Yeah, so, I missed that store, but anyway. The, but no, I, I think it, you know, I'm okay with it, cause since there was already daycare there, I think the people would be used to the traffic. But, um, since, my only question is, is since Montessori was Italian, do y'all teach your kids how to cook Italian?
We don't, but we do teach them how to cook. Maybe I'll throw some Italian recipes in.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I don't have, I just wanna ask Brandy, did the, do I know the citizen that you're talking about that spoke out of?
Yes, sir, I do believe.
Well, he's happy now, so that.
Good. I, I spoke with him, and I confirmed that, but I'm, I'm glad to hear you say the same.
He's a-okay with everything, whatever you, you, you did your magic wand and leave.
I don't know about that, but, thank you for confirming. Thank you.
Go for the questions. Um, I'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And there'll be two.
As soon as I get reorganized here, I'll find my motion sheet.
You need the.
It's right there.
Here.
On the screen.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record for CZ 2020-0101 by staff on June 8th, 2021.
Mr. Moss has made the motion, all in favor. Let the record show that was unanimous.
Would also like to make the following motion to approve the Conditional Rezoning Request, CZ 2020-0101, ordinance number 210608-357.
Mr.? Go ahead.
As, as written?
Oh, I think it says there was additional conditions as stated.
Uh, as needed with additional conditions as stated, and applicant's verbal agreement.
That's only if we have additional conditions.
Yeah. Right.
No.
So as written.
Mr. Moss has made the motion, all in favor. That again was unanimous. Thank you. Uh, on the old business, is that update, Old Monroe Road, McIntyre? I don't have an update, so we'll move on to item 10B. Mr. Kramer, Park and Rec Events Update, Juneteenth, July 4th, Fall Festival, fireworks, and everything else.
And everything else. Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. Just a brief update for our upcoming events. With COVID-19 restrictions loosening, we are excited to get back into the, the swing of things with some events. Some new things coming up, and just wanna make you all aware and answer any questions you may have. Juneteenth, coming up Saturday, June 19th, 11:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. It's gonna be hosted in Monroe at Belk Tonawanda Park. The day will focus on music, food, and cultural celebration. As a reminder, this event will serve as a celebration and also an education on what Juneteenth means, officially marking the, the end of slavery. Essentially, this is a partnered event with the Town of Indian Trail, City of Monroe Park and Recreation, Waxwell Park and Recreation, Trinity Wellness, Union County Public Library, as well as NC Cooperative Extension. This, some things have changed. It was going to be a drive-through event, but with the loosening of, of restrictions, it is now an in-person vendor event. So welcome everyone out. Again, this is our, our first Juneteenth event, and, and very, very happy with the, the support that we've gotten across the county in, in such a small time. July 3rd Parade, step-off is at 11:30. Lions Club is ready. They've guaranteed us not such a hot day. Put that on, Mr. Barber, if it, if it is a hot one, but we know it will be. So the, the, the day will feature Mr. Joe Ga, Joel Galix as mayor of the day, and Ms. Grace Laney as grand marshal. One of the things I would reach out to all of you, let us know if you will be able to ride in the parade. Typically, we have a float. Just wanna make sure that we have enough water and seats and candy and things like that. So I'll send an email out tomorrow, if you're able to kinda check your, your calendar and schedule. Your family, grandchildren, nieces, nephews are always welcome, so feel free to invite them along. Now, everybody's favorite topic, fireworks. We are looking at a date of August 28th for what was, what was kind of our fall festival, will be moved up to like an end-of-summer festival. Essentially, being late to the game, there are multiple moving things when they're trying to, to plan. So space, the availability of rides, availability of fireworks, availability of staff, and things of that nature. So August 28th is, is kinda what we're planning on. The intent is to have a festival across the street at Chestnut with rides and vendors and food, and, and the night with fireworks. So, very exciting. Well, I think we're, we're looking forward to that. With the official adoption of the budget, we can kinda take those next steps to, to solidify some of those agreements and get ready to sign off on those in July. I believe that is all I have for, for those three events. We will provide you with a list of events for the next fiscal year. We, we have about 25 on the schedule. So some of these are new events, some of these are returning events, and it should be a very, very robust schedule that, that the community can get behind.
Any questions for Hayden?
I am too.
All right. So Hayden, don't go too far.
Don't worry. I'm, I'm getting the next sheet out, sir.
Yep. Next item, which is the decision on reallocation of park and rec funds for fiscal year '21.
Absolutely. So this was an item that was first presented to you during the manager's comments at, at last meeting. These projects have been with the department for a while, something that we'd like to tackle. It's also based on community suggestions as well. The thinking behind this is with COVID that has limited the, the offerings that the department has been able to put forward as a town, we believe that some end-of-year budget adjustments will be able to tackle some projects out at Crooked Creek Park that will provide some lasting impact out of the park, and again, use the dollars that have already been previously budgeted for park and rec items to, to tackle some of those projects. A benefit of this is that the bond dollars would remain untouched. That means that when we look at additional park projects, again, tied to Crooked, tied to Chestnut, as we move forward through those, that pie remains full. We looked for, to the board for, for permission. If approved, you'll see a budget amendment on the June 22nd meeting. Essentially, all of these projects should not be new. They were presented earlier this year through kinda the, the menu of options, as well as they were identified when we all visited the parks, either individually as a group. Just a, a brief little synopsis of what we're going through, and then we're gonna briefly touch on all of these. Again, feel free to stop me if you have any questions, and obviously available for questions at the end as well. These projects, as you see on the screen, you know, we, we believe fall within the nine priorities that you all identified during the budget process this year. And then just to expand briefly and tell, tell a little bit about what they, what they are and what they can bring for the town. The, the first item is some additional security cameras. These security cameras would cover both parking lots, both playgrounds, and the Crow's Nest area. These cameras would be accessible by Union County Sheriff, and actually, that's who we're working with to install them. Obviously, with security cameras comes the ability, if there is something out of the park, we can pull camera footage, see if there's, you know, vandalism or a break-in. And then obviously, the security cameras provide that sense of security as well, knowing that they are out there. And obviously, safety being one of the, the main priorities that you, you have all targeted, also falls in line with our priorities as well. Moving along, talking about safety as lightning detection equipment, this takes essentially the, the guesswork out of umpires and coaches and things like that. Councilmember Cohen is a commissioner. You, I'm sure you've been out there where you see the, the rumbling and, and the strikes in the distance, but we're only half an inning away from making the game official. You know, you say, hey, go, go and strike out and get out. We're ahead. Let's, let's end the game right now. But obviously, not the most safe thing at times. So the lightning detection equipment would provide an audible, as well as a visual cue that there's lightning detected. We have the ability to set the radius, and then after there are no strikes for a predetermined time, it would also sound the all-clear, which would then allow play to resume. Again, with safety being key, this takes it out of the hands of the umpires, out of the hands of the coaches, and allows that to, to alert everyone in the park that, that there's, you know, lightning, you know, clear off the playground, clear off the, the splash bed and things of that nature. We have applied for a grant through the North Carolina League of Municipalities to offset the cost. That was a $5,000 grant. We have yet to hear back from them, but essentially, that would help offset the, the cost of the equipment. The next item that we're going to discuss is, is an ADA bathroom. So this would be on the right-hand side of the, of Crooked Creek Park. This restroom would facilitate, you know, the playground area, disc golf, dog park, fitness equipment, as well as the staff out of the maintenance yard. While there is a bathroom in the middle of the park, we're roughly a 600-foot walk from, from that bathroom facility, you know, to, to where the, the dog park and the fitness equipment and the, and the playground are. That distance seems short maybe to you and I, but I can, I can assure you with a three-year-old that runs up to you that says, Dad, I have to go potty, that, that gets a little long. Additionally, with that playground being the only ADA playground in, in the county, folks that may have, you know, use of a crutch or, or a wheelchair or something of that nature, suddenly that distance becomes much, much greater. You know, you can imagine in the hot summer days, a seven-year-old saying, man, I have to go to the bathroom, and now it's a, you know, 600-foot walk there, 600-foot walk back, and we're taking time away from our friends, taking time away from our family. It also kinda balances out the park. As you know, on the other side of the park with the, with the playground and splash bed, there's a bathroom over there as well. This facility would not be hooked up to water and sewer, although it would be pre-plumbed to have that ability in the future. So, essentially, there would be vaults underneath. The bathroom facility is good for about 15,000 uses. Then we'd have a company come out, pump it out and, and restart that cycle. The next is going to be the ADA shelter next to the playground. Again, trying to be inclusive. If you have a mobility disability, currently, there is no place for you at the park to host a birthday party and play in the playground, just like my daughter would. So, this would add that there. Several times, and, and looking at our schedule, every single Saturday, all three shelters that are out there, all three timeframes are booked. So, this also provides an additional rental revenue opportunity. Working with the Union West Roadie Club, we've also, they have also applied for a grant to help potentially offset the cost. Money would come from the club as well as the district. So, we're looking potentially from that $5,000 to $8,000 range. Moving right along, a story walk brings in, you know, education, nature, exercise and time with family. Trying to be all-inclusive, we would also look into a Braille story walk. This is something that we were working closely with, with Union County Public Library. And just a great way to, to potentially bring another amenity that is all-inclusive out to the park. Also has a great sponsorship opportunity as well. And then finally, the, the disc golf outfit. As you know, this area is famous literally for, for disc golf. We've already been in talks with some local disc golf clubs that are interested in hosting tournaments because of our course with, with youth, which would be something new to the area. Again, bringing in potential additional revenue dollars, additional sponsorship dollars. This would also make the course more professional, a lot, a little more safe as well. With this comes the addition of benches and trashcans, which aren't always the most glamorous items, but it helps our public works crew, you know, stay less busy essentially, because right now, people are just tossing litter and cigarette butts and things like that out on the course, which causes them to, to, to do some more work. Just briefly, we've met with the town manager, finance director and director of public works to walk over all the logistics that, that go through. All of those folks support the project. Obviously, staff recommends it from the park and rec side as well. Here to answer any questions that, that you may have on these projects.
Yeah. Council, any comments? And we'll start with Mr. Hayden. Any questions or comments for?
Excuse me. I think you've done, you and your staff have done an excellent job and looking forward to all these improvements.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Barber.
Are the ADA playground and the bathroom and the shelter, are they going to be connected where say like someone in a walker or a wheelchair through sidewalk can get from one to the other?
Correct. So, much like the, the ADA playground now, you know, you can get there through, through the walkway. It would be connected. So, you know, you could go from the shelter to the playground, to the bathroom and back and forth as many times your heart wanted to, all on a paved or, or poured-in-place surface. Correct.
Yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Morse.
What's the timeframe to, to do this?
Absolutely. So, our, our goal would be to, you know, start submitting purchase orders through the system to have all these funds encumbered, you know, by the end of the, this fiscal year. And then timeframe all depends on, you know, ordering of things and things, and things of that nature.
So, we're looking at next year before there's really built or?
I don't want to give you a, a yes or no. Some things, some things may be easier. You know, we have a, a shelter that's ready to go and we can, you know, potentially call them tomorrow and say, hey, hit, hit the green go button. How quick it gets here because of everything that's going on with shortages of supplies and things, I don't know. Everything, my goal would be wrapped up in six months or so.
And all these prices, they're firm?
They're maybe even a little high. You know, my, my goal is not to come back and say, oops, we, we shorted. But yes, they, they are, they are pretty accurate.
Last question is, is when, just when someone shows up at one of those shelters and, and they're already reserved, is there a board or is there something there that notifies people that says, hey, you better be out of here by two?
Yeah. Yeah. So, a couple of different things that, that we do. At, at every shelter, there's a green kiosk that is, you know, that a piece of paper is, is put in by our staff. So, it would say, you know, Tuesday, June 8th, Jerry Morris, 4:00 to 6:30. So, that alerts anybody else that, that may show up. On the weekends as well, which is when 97% of our rentals occur, our part-time staff is there facilitating that. So, checking in with you, emptying your trashcan, making sure you're there on time, making sure you're out on time. We also have an after-hour cell phone that if anybody has an issue 24 hours a day, they can give us a call. It's answered by our full-time staff. And we make the necessary, you know, calls and adjustments, whether it's calling our part-time staff and say, hey, can you go change a trashcan, calling the sheriff if something happens or, or coming on site if need be.
All right. I do have one question.
Absolutely.
First question really is the lighting detection system, it's for Crooked Creek, right?
Correct.
What about Chestnut? Because Chestnut, we do have fields there as well. Is that, is there any consideration for putting one out of Chestnut as well?
There is. You know, we-
It's not included in here?
Correct. It is not included. Everything was focused at Crooked Creek. You know, there are a list of projects that we would like to do and unfortunately, the, the budget is not as long as that list.
Okay.
But yes, I think that would be something, again, looking at potential bond dollars, that would be a great project to, to also install there at a fairly reasonable cost.
All right. Second question is the ADA bathroom, it's one bathroom, right?
So, it was a male and female, but, but correct, a, a one stall in each.
Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions. I guess you're looking for action from us at the next meeting, correct?
So, I-
This evening?
Ideally.
May I speak to that?
Absolutely.
Very briefly. Two, two points. What we would like you to do is, is vote to authorize the budget amendment so we could get started on it, start the paperwork. Even though the formal budget amendment will come on the 22nd of June, so we at least know where we stand. Public Works will coordinate the installation. On an unrelated note, Mr. Mayor Protem, we can also look at lighting detection in the next fiscal year budget for that part.
Yep.
Whether we use bond money or something like that.
Thank you.
So, the bottom line is we would like to get some action from the board tonight.
All right. So, board, the manager has kind of given us what we need to do. We need to get a motion from you, one of you, but do any of you have any objections to approving this so they can get started on this or Ms. Queen?
Attorney Walter, would a consensus work for us to move forward and then approve the budget amendment on this or do we need a motion? But the budget amendment will be coming at the next meeting. We're just consensus today. This is not a budget amendment today. This is just to approve the idea-
What do you need? Do you need a budget amendment approval today or do you just need consensus today?
Consensus, right. She's correct. Consensus that you agree that we can go ahead with the budget amendment and then when we bring it to you next time, you can see it and approve it.
So, can, so council, do we have consensus, consensus for them to move forward with the budget amendment for the next meeting? Mr. Hayden is saying yes. Mr. Cohen is yes. Mr. Barber, yes. Mr. Morse is yes.
Thank you.
So, you have consensus to move forward. Thank you, Hayden.
Appreciate you all. Thank you.
All right. I guess, Mr. McLaurin, the next two items are you. Are you going to speak to those or?
Jim will be speaking to those and that deals with the American Rescue Fund.
Thank you.
The next two items will be Jim.
Mr. Waldowitz, thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is a good news story. The, the funding, we're expecting about $11 million within the next two years. We're still working out with Mike and we have a little bit of a team with the staff, how we're going to best use it. But basically, they had recommended that we establish a special revenue fund. So, the money will be deposited into there and then we expend it, we'll move it in to the general fund, kind of like what we did with the CARES Act funding, which worked great. So, I, I look for you to support that we establish a special revenue fund, Marcus, first thing, 10D.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Waldowitz on that? Or you guys are ready to move with a resolution for establishing a special revenue fund?
No questions.
Then can I get a motion from, from one of you, please? There's a motion sheet there. It's at the back. 10, 10D.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 210608-3, which is establishing the ARPA American Rescue Plan Revenue Fund.
Mr. Hayden has made the motion, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you. Now, 10E is simply the, we want it to have a resolution that authorized us to accept the monies. So, basically, I'm asking you to approve that when the monies come in. Now, there'll be one more step. After the money comes in, we're expecting about $5.5 million in, in June. And after that, we'll need one more budget amendment and hopefully it'll be here before the 22nd when the money comes in. But it's all good news. We're working hard on the best way to use it. And there'll be a lot more on that.
I think this is self-explanatory. Can I get a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 0210608-361.
Mr. Hayden has made the motion, all in favor?
Thank you.
That is also unanimous. All right. New business, fiscal year 21 spring resurfacing contract, Mr. Hunsinger.
Good, good evening, counsel. Let me lower this a little bit. I'll stand on my tiptoes. How about that? Here to ask for approval to give a notice of war to Lynch's River Contracting. They were the low bidder for our FYI 2021 resurfacing contract. As you well know, this is a contract that we are partnering with at the Town of Stallings. We did hold a, a pre, a pre-bid meeting and Town Stallings was there as well. Went very well. Had, had like four or five betters for the project. And I can say that the, the amount you see in front of you, the $1,176,781.91 was under the engineer's estimate. We did, since we have not worked with Lynch's River Contracting before, in the contract, they do have to list prior references and so, minimum three. So, we did contact Lancaster County, NCDOT and City of Monroe and they had no issues with their projects with this company. So, we feel confident that they'll do a good job for us. Any questions?
Any questions?
Can you convince them to drop a little bit of asphalt in that hole between Stallings and Indian Trail or Matthews Indian Trail Road, please?
Yeah, I need to talk to NCDOT about that. It's getting to be an ongoing issue.
Mr. Mr. Barber?
No questions.
How about you, Mr. Cohen? Mr. Hayden?
No questions.
All right. So, then I guess we need a motion here, ask for action. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion. Make, make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 spring resurfacing contract with Lynch's River Contracting in the amount of $1,176,781.91.
Mr. Barber has made the motion, all in favor? All right. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hunsinger. Mr. Hunsinger, you're up again, I guess, with Education Street Release Request Resolution R. 210608-02.
Yes, sir. We got a notice from NCDOT. The Union County Board of Education filed a petition with the state to proceed with, the petition was to proceed with abandonment of Education Street in two sections. I don't know if you had that map that was in the agenda packet? Oh, okay. Well, anyway, there was a map you should have seen in, in agenda packet to kind of show you the boundaries. So, I received a letter from DOT saying that they did receive the petition. I did get the petition as well, asking for the town to look into the matter. If y'all feel comfortable with abandonment of this street, which I've explained I don't have any issues with, then we will move forward with the resolution to the state to give them permission to move forward with the abandonment.
Any questions? Will you be able to pull it out of the street or?
No.
Would any of you like to see it from Ms. Queen? Everybody's seen it.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
All right. No. So, any questions? Nope. So, then let's, well, we need a motion then.
Yeah. Motion to approve the town to go through the resolution process.
I'll make that motion.
Yep. Thank you.
To approve Resolution 210608-02 regarding request to approve abandonment petitions for secondary roads 1369 and 1370.
Mr. Morse has made the motion, all in favor? Mr. Cohen, you in favor, sir? All right. Five. That was unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
All right. And Mr. McLaurin, you're up, Economic Development Partnership with Retail Strategies via Monroe Economic Development Group.
Thank you. One of the things we're trying to do is develop a more formal economic development policy in practice. And that's going to take several steps. One is re-establishing a relationship with the County Economic Development Department, Mr. Chris Platte. And that also involves looking at various parts of economic development from retail to office park to industrial. This is the first part. And so, this is something we brought to you several months ago in a high-level discussion about contracting with retail strategies out of Birmingham, Alabama, to kind of assist us in identifying where are our gaps in retail. And they have contacts with the people who can make those decisions to relocate or build a place in Indian Trail. The City of Monroe has used them for a number of years. Gastonia, I think, is a member, Laurinburg and some other places throughout the Carolinas. We've had several meetings with them. We think they would be a good agent for us to do this. The way we have structured this agreement is because we can leverage the Monroe contract with our contract and coordinate it through the County Economic Development Agency. We could save about $20,000 over the three-year contract. So, we would like you to consider approving an agreement with Retail Strategies of Birmingham, Alabama to be administered and run through the County Economic Development. We would get our invoice through them and Mr. Platte has committed to come to this board on a regular basis and discuss economic development activity that's going on in Indian Trail.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McLaurin? And we'll start with you, Mr. Hayden.
I don't have any questions. I think it's, it's very needed and I'm looking forward to the results.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Barber?
You say this is the first step, just retail, right?
For right now, yes, sir. And I can share with you, and this is not related to this, that after the beginning of the fiscal year, we would like to bring the County Economic Development in to work with us to develop a formal economic development plan, which you currently do not have.
What would be the advantage of going over, going through this process and contracting with a firm out of Birmingham, as opposed to maybe having our own economic developer person here? I mean, before you were here, you know, a couple of years, we had a retail economic developer person consultant and we did not renew that contract with that person because due to COVID. But I was just wondering if, would it be more advantageous to maybe to bring in someone who worked on it full-time as opposed to this?
In all honesty, I don't think the timing is right for something like that. The retail strategy folks, they have daily contact with the retail groups out there. They know the, once they identify where our retail leakage is and once they identify what our available properties are and what would be a right fit for the town, then they're able to go out there. They're also, you may be familiar with the International Shopping Center Association. They are at those conferences talking up Indian Trail and Monroe and their other clients.
Well, yeah. I've known people who've done, you know, shopping center commercial. You might know Bobby Carver over in Charlotte, if you were, worked in Charlotte. So, the, and his group, so the, but I was just wondering if it was, you know- The, uh, but I was just wondering if it was, you know, since you're just talking retail, and like you said, I'm kind of more looking at a bigger picture, I just want to make sure we're moving towards a bigger picture.
I think we are, and as you start to talk about office parks, for example, I think you and I had that conversation. That's a different type specialty. If you talk about industrial, that's an additional specialty. And, you know, one example I like to give, if you've ever been to Greenville, South Carolina, downtown Greenville, they started on a plan 15, 20 years ago where they wanted to really change their downtown, and they started to do, what do we need in this town, and then actually going out to get the folks. So I think we could, this is, this is going to take several years to get off the ground, so I think this would be the, a good first step to go.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah, so I see this is focused on retail, and retail, we have, we have Monroe that's full of retail. And we have Matthews that's full of retail up there, and we're kind of sandwiched in the middle. But one of the things I was thinking about is, if we're in, if we're in this partnership with Monroe, how, how do, how, how's it decided where Whole Foods is going to go, Monroe or Indian Trail, if that's one of these retailers?
Very legitimate question. If you take, for example, Whole Foods, they've got a certain model that they will use to decide a location. You may have a case where there may be a business that is more appropriate for Indian Trail than Monroe. One of the things they look at, and I'm going to speak very broadly, for example, is what is the median family income? What is the traffic count in a location? When I was in Waxahachie, they wanted a Trader Joe's. Well, the numbers just don't add up for a Trader Joe's. Uh, I'm familiar with one town that's not as prosperous as our town, and they wanted a Panera. Well, they're not getting a Panera because it doesn't fit the model.
So it has to do with demographics?
Exactly.
They make decisions based on the demographics?
Exactly.
And basically, your economic people aren't the ones really making the decision. It's the, the companies that are making the decision. It's not, it's, you know, it's not somebody saying, oh, we're going to decide between Monroe and, and Indian Trail and a, for Trader Joe's or whatever. They're going to put it to where their demographics are best.
And, you know, it's, it's like having your elevator speech ready. You know, we've got an economic development brochure that, that we're in the process of updating. I think you'll like that. So that when someone is interested in Indian Trail, we have the information right there, and we can guide them through the process.
Any other questions, Mr. Morse?
It'll have to come later.
All right. So, um, this item requires action from us?
Yes, sir.
I'd like a motion, please, if you have no further questions.
Then I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Morse.
Uh, we have this discussion of rejoining the quad that's coming up. It seems to be kind of parallel to what we're talking about with the economic development discussion, so.
Okay.
I, I, I realize that's in the manager's update, but I was kind of curious how that's going to work with conjunction of the economic development.
I can speak to that now with the consent of the board, or?
Well, do you give consent to the manager to speak on that now?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, take it away.
Basically, um, since I've been here almost a year now, I have sat in on some of those quad meetings. I think originally they were looking at doing some type of economic development, but it hasn't seemed to have morphed in that direction. It's more of an information sharing, and some of it may be COVID. This one, as I see it, is a more organized approach towards retail recruitment and retention than what the quad is right now.
Is there any cost in the quad?
Right now, there is no quad. Uh, there is no quad. There is no cost. Uh, initially, there was some cost, but they haven't charged dues in several years, is my understanding.
And refresh, and if I refresh my memory on the economic development, it was 30K-ish, 35, 30?
It's 35, 30, and 30. It's three years. 35, 30, 30.
For the retail strategies.
Okay.
And he says that for the life of the contract, it's approximately $7 million a year in, oh, sorry, $7,000 a year in savings. You said it's 20 over the life, right?
Yeah.
So it's roughly about 7,000, not million, 7,000 a year in savings because we're going through Monroe. Um, in other words, using Monroe, it gives us a discount. Is that what you're saying, sir?
Correct, because they're basically two contracts. And Monroe got a little bit better price because they're an electric cities, and Electric Cities has a master contract with them. Electric Cities, they've got their own power. Okay, they're a power provider. So, I, I think it's, I think it's worth an investment for three years. Let's see how it works out. And at the meantime, after July 1st, let's start looking at a formal economic development plan, figure out what our vision is as it relates to industrial and office park, because this is not a race. It's a long-term run, and so we want to look back in five, 10, 15 years and really be pleased with the work that we're doing tonight.
Mr. Morse, it seems like you have another question.
Well, and it's, it relates to the retail component of this. Uh, in light of what's been happening with COVID, is this, is this the right thing to do? Is retail the right thing, or should it be the industrial side or the commercial side, or?
So, we, my, my comment on that is, we can do two things. We can walk and chew gum at the same time, meaning it doesn't have to be one or the other. We could look at retail strategies, but as he was saying, um, we do have to look at an economic development plan. One of the things I think we started when we were looking at our comprehensive plan was to bring in, work with Chris Platte out of the Economic Development Group, to sort of identify certain areas within the town's limits that possibly a medical park, office park, light industrial, that type of thing, could be either zoned or located or identified. So therefore, when we are looking at inviting some of, you know, whomever it is, it's, we, we have these places identified, therefore it makes some of the things ready. One of the advantages I think Monroe and Union County has over us is that there's some things that are pad-ready, I think that they have. That makes it a little bit easier when you're coming in, you, you sort of have things identified to make it a little bit easier. We are not at that stage, but I think you're talking about getting our economic plan ready, so therefore we can get to that stage where things, we have places identified, it's pad-ready, or it's a shell, and they can come in and, you know, fit it whichever way they want. So I'd say there's, we could do both things, um, and it could be a targeted approach, meaning certain things that we'd like to see.
And, and the other thing I would ask about retail, keep in mind that with retail, you get sales tax. And sales tax is your second leading source of revenue in your budget. You know, the, the example I like to give is we're in the 24th largest city in the state of North Carolina. I can't buy a racing bike, or running shoes, or a suit of clothes. And so I think you need to have diverse retail, and you also need to have office and industrial so we can keep the jobs here also.
Thank you. So no additional questions for the manager? We're all good? So now I need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve an economic development partnership with Retail Strategies via Monroe Economic Development Group, not to exceed 35,000 in year one, 30,000 in year two, and 30,000 in year three.
Mr. Head has made the motion, all in favor? All right, that was unanimous. And, um, I guess, Mr. Walder, you're up next, sir?
Thank you. And this is a, as Mike mentioned earlier, this is a year-end housekeeping item. Kathy, thanks for getting us on tonight. With the year-end approaching, wanted to get a couple of these things. So this is simply a, uh, an amendment to the original ordinance that correctly classifies the accounts for the cares. Um, the budget amendment was passed in February. Um, this is where we got the 506,000. Uh, so basically what this does is lines up everything perfectly for the 506. All the monies have been received and budgeted accordingly. So that'll be in this year's audit, and so I ask you to, uh, approve this, uh, budget ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yep. Well, you want to finish this one up, and I'll pick up the next item?
I'll take that one. Any, any questions for?
That's the last item?
There's a lighter.
I'm glad I could be here. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Any questions for Mr. Walder with on, um, this amended ordinance? Uh, Mr. Head?
No.
Uh, Mr. Cohen? Uh, Mr. Alvarez?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mr. Barber?
No questions.
Mr. Morse? So then I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve amended ordinance 0210608-359 to consolidate expenses per section two of ordinance 0201013-343 and two, one single line item.
All right, Mr. Cohen has made the motion, all in favor? All right, let it show that it was unanimous, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, sir. You can go with, uh, item 13A, sir.
Item 13A, that would be the manager's update.
All right, what I'm going to do-
Oh, boy, this was a long meeting for me.
All right, what I'm going to do is you got your memo. I've got a couple of items, uh, I want to touch on in addition to the memo. So with the consent of the board, I'm going to take care of items A, B, jump down and grab E, and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Ball and Ms. Dees to, to deal with HB 496. Um, several months ago, we talked about joining the county with their CDBG program. Uh, we have signed a letter of participation. There is no charge to the town right now. At a future meeting, perhaps as early as your next meeting, the Assistant County Manager, Patrick Nylund, will come in and ask that we approve a formal agreement, and that will need board approval. Again, there is no charge to the council or to the town to sign that formal agreement. But what it does do, it does give the county the authorization to work with the town on CDBG projects. CDBG projects stand for Community Development Block Grant Projects, which could be anything from minimum housings, housings that are in disrepair, and that people, uh, don't have the money to, to keep them up, to sidewalks, to some other infrastructure stuff. So be looking at for that. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, and we touched on a little while ago, Jerry brought up some very good questions, and that is joining the Quad Alliance. As I mentioned, when I came here almost a year ago, they invited me to the meeting, even though, um, we're not technically a member. Originally, the town actually helped get it started, was my understanding. And right now, they just seem to be sharing information. There may be some things that they're interested in doing that, for whatever reason, it's not in our best interest to do, and, and we respectfully say, we can work with you on this, but not this. I can tell you from my experience in working around the state and working with the COG is that as growth occurs, and it will continue to occur, our borders are going to get more and more blended to where you don't know whether you're in Stallings or Indian Trail or Monroe. When I moved here in the 70s, there were two stoplights between Charlotte, I think, and Monroe, and that was a long time ago. And so we've got to work with our neighbors, just like we're doing tonight with the paving. I'm so appreciative of y'all approving that contract so we can work with Stallings on that. And so I wanted to throw that out to see if we're interested in reapplying for membership to the COG. If you want to think about it, I can bring it back.
The quad, the quad, not the COG?
Quad. What do I call it?
COG.
COG.
At least that's what I heard.
Mr. Mayor, it has been a long meeting, hasn't it, sir?
It has.
So anyway, I just want to see if that's interesting, if y'all are interested in rejoining the quad. Uh, right now, there is no dues being charged, and there has not been any discussion that I've been informed where they're ready to start charging dues again.
What does Quad stand for?
It's supposed to be Alliance of Four Towns.
Four Cities.
What do they do?
They talk a lot.
I think it's just primarily a communication network. They don't have any real projects that, I've only been to three meetings. They meet roughly quarterly or every other month.
If I don't have to go, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Just the consensus would do, uh, I guess. Marcus?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, sir.
Mike?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
David, thank you.
I've seen it. I was here when it started.
Yeah?
And, I, you know, if you can't see anything good about something, you shouldn't see anything at all, so I'm not going to say anything. I don't, don't really particular. I think it's, uh, I, I, I think it, I've, to be honest with you, I don't know that I've ever been to a meeting, maybe one. But, um, I don't know of any good anything that's come out of it, but that's up to you guys. That's just my opinion.
I, I would tend to agree with Mr. Cohen on the quad unless it's changed and did a completely, complete 180 from the way it was before. It's not worth our time.
Okay.
I'm not going, so.
He doesn't care. As long as he doesn't go, he's for it. Mr. Morse?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Who's time?
Sir?
Waste of whose time?
I would think it'd be Mr. McLaurin that would be the point person for it.
Yes.
And determine whether it's being functional now or if it was the same dysfunctional organization it was several years ago.
Yeah.
I don't want to appear to be biased, but, uh, and, and I know we have discussed the quad, so for me, I just leave it up to the town manager and let him come back to the council, this council, the next council, and tell them if it's worth it or not.
Do you have a recommendation? You've been to several meetings.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think, you know, they may have an elected official there along with staff. I, I think y'all, you know, I wasn't there before, so I don't know a lot of the history, admittedly. I think it's something you ought to do, because again, you know, what happens in Indian Trail affects Matthews, or Matthews affects Indian Trail. And I know some of the meetings that I attended, there was a discussion among the quad cities about what are our transportation plans so we can make sure that whatever we're doing on this side is coordinated with that side.
I'd like to bring that point up, though.
Yes, sir.
Because Monroe Road being perfect example.
Right.
We want to get it widened.
Right.
Matthews is not interested.
Yeah.
It deadens in Matthews.
Yep.
So while they say that in practice, and that comes back to some of the points that I think David and Michael will make, and is that, um, it, it, in, in theory, it sounds well, but in practice, there are issues.
Yeah.
Um, and that's some of the things, there's a little bit of a jaded feeling here in that we will sort of look down or ignore it essentially when some of those discussions will go in, which is one of the reasons it kind of fell apart.
Right.
While I am not opposed to speaking and participating, it does have to come back to something being worthwhile for Indian Trail. Unnecessarily meaning we get everything we want, but if we're part of the group, we do, it is recognized that we're a town of 40-something thousand people.
Right.
We do play an important part within Union County and Mecklenburg because of our proximity, so, you know, just want to mention that.
Now, that, that's a good point. I think what I'm hearing from the, the members, and let's see if we've got a consensus on this, is that, um, would it be accurate to say you would like for me to continue to attend those meetings, and then if we can find a more formal work plan, then perhaps bring it back to the board in the future?
I would say yes.
Yeah, and, and I think that, um, it probably need, you know, every time there's a meeting, if you can just kind of give us an update of what was discussed.
Yes.
So that we can kind of track the, the progress or the whack thereof.
Okay.
It's a more functional organization if it's a member of, like, the town managers' meeting or the assistant town managers' meeting. If you remove the elected official from the quad, it may very well be a good informational organization. It was just a cluster of power, power control before.
Fair enough.
Just, I, I would say if the council isn't good with Mr. McLaurin attending, as long as he finds it useful information and it's worth his time, it's good to communicate with our, with our neighbors.
Doesn't sound too good, but from what I hear, but if it's your time, but if you ain't got nothing better to do, go for it.
I got plenty to do, but sometimes you need to be at the table to make sure they don't do it to you.
If you're just bored, I'd rather do it.
All right. I, I think I've got a clear understanding from the board.
Hopefully, there's not a football game on.
Listen.
Oh, yeah.
All right. I, I think Jerry wants to, Jerry, you want to say something?
I just, no, I'm good.
Todd said it all.
Well, let me, let me give you some good news, okay?
Okay.
I got three- I got three bits of good news. I think the county is making some moves last night, which hopefully will result in a long-term solution. We are meeting, the managers and I, Waxall and Stallins and myself are meeting Friday afternoon to, to, you know, look at that agreement one more time. I've asked Karen to give her comments, and we're optimistic that will go well, okay? And once the three towns are ready, then we'll bring it up to the board for approval, okay? We're staying in touch with the county. We appreciate what the county board did last night, and we're looking forward to some permanent, long-term solutions. The other thing, I have talked to you before about doing road trips. For those of you that might be interested, going to Cornelius. And so we're looking at scheduling something in Cornelius, probably in mid-August. Now, why Cornelius? Because they had to grow their town very rapidly. And they will be the first to tell you they did some things right and they did some things wrong. And so we want to give, give them the opportunity to sit down with you and just kind of have that good discussion.
Before, before you go on, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know you're planning that trip. Sorry to interrupt. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna just jump. There may be council members who may be out of town.
Right.
So I'll probably ask that. I'm just gonna tell for public information. I will be unavailable from July sixteenth to August eighth through. So just kind of as a FYI.
Okay. I think we're looking at the thirteenth right now.
Well, just, I don't know if anybody else has any other plans.
August the thirteenth?
I think that's right.
I won't be here. I'm, it's okay. We're going on vacation the eighth through the fifteenth.
All right, let, let me, let me try to reach out and find out what the schedules are.
Yeah.
It's like Todd. I, I don't have anything better to do. In my, I mean, who's, I have nothing I can do. He's gonna be out of town. Who's gonna lend me a hand?
Nobody, man. Nobody. You gotta be on your own, man.
Rest of us gonna be at the pool.
The, the other field trip we would like to take is up in Holly Springs, much like your town, where they had to, where they had to grow up very fast. And so, again, it's an opportunity to sit down and just having those discussions be very helpful to you. I can tell you from experience.
I look forward to those, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. All right.
Mr. Manager, a question. Can this be, we've got Zoom experience now. Instead of doing a road trip, can we not utilize some of this investment? Just a thought.
Yeah.
I don't think you'd get the benefit from a Zoom, though. I think you'd have to probably be onsite.
Yeah.
Because you want to see some of the infrastructure stuff that they, they did, some of the challenges that they probably had.
Yes. So noted. I, I would agree with, with Marcus that sometimes these in-person meetings have a whole lot more value. I know when I teach students in Zoom versus forty students in a classroom, I can get much more discussion going than the Zoom, so. But we'll try to arrange it for dates that work for everybody.
Or maybe Saturday to, to accommodate some of us who work during the week?
Yeah. We're flexible. We're flexible.
Vegas.
Okay, now we're talking.
Okay. The last thing is, we, I got an email from Todd about inviting Representative Willis from the legislature to come give a report. I spoke to him this afternoon, and he is going to get up with Senator Todd Johnson and Dean Arp and let us know when they might be available. Now, that one may need to be a Zoom meeting because they're meeting on Tuesday night. He said they thought they would get a break sometime in July or August. But he's gonna talk, and as soon as I know something, I'll relay that back to you. And, Mr. Mayor and Council, that's all the reports I have. The next item up will be Abby talking about photo of council members, and then we'll have Brandy Deese.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ms. Queen and I have discussed having an updated photo of every sitting council. So the last one we have is when Ms. Shirley was still here. So we would like to get an updated photo with all of you, and then again, you know, obviously in November when the new council is sitting. So if, if you're all agreeable to that, we can schedule it for the next meeting, so we don't spring it on you tonight. So if that's okay with everybody, we can put that on the next, the twenty-second meeting to do a group photo.
Come early.
Or we can do it after. It's, the timing is up to you.
I'm, I'm okay with next meeting. We can do it before, come early, and that way everybody's clothes is freshly pressed and, you know, laundered.
Is everybody else good with that?
Hit my line of work, right.
Everybody's, we're good with that? Okay, all right. Thank you.
I said no, but I'd get overruled.
That's what Hawaiian shirt.
Yeah.
I'll wear one too, so you don't feel left out.
Good evening once again. Just a quick update. The town of Indian Trail is currently spearheading the efforts to oppose House Bill four ninety-six. It's entitled Tree Ordinance or Tree Preservation. Throughout the state, as we ask other questions of jurisdictions, it seemed as if many were not aware of the full impact of this bill or that it was surprisingly moving forward. So we have thirteen resolutions from various jurisdictions across the state, and we plan to share that tomorrow with each of the legislative committees. This should help in seeing that this bill doesn't move forward through the process. The town manager and I wanted to hold off on sending that to the legislative committee until we were able to brief council on this action. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Can you, can you send us a link to the bill like we?
Yes, absolutely. I'll be glad to.
Email that to us?
Yes.
Thanks. In a way, I can track it in committee and everything.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see that there's item E, which is miscellaneous.
Well, that's-
So I, I do have an item if you have a miscellaneous, right?
Yes, sir.
There is a, a bill making its way through the legislature regarding municipal and primaries and so forth. Can you give us an update on that? Does that have an effect on Indian Trails? Because the town council's election is in November this year, right?
Right.
So does that, is that gonna affect us? I know that I was on a call with the mayor or the council in Waxall, I think, had put some effort to delay the term of some of the members by a year and so forth. So I just want to see what, if that has any effect on-
I, I think there's two things, and I think they're separate things, so, but we will go back and, and validate. In the case of Waxall, what Waxall and some cities are doing are trying to shift the election to even-year election. I think that's what Waxall's doing. The other thing pertaining to the election is because of the delay in the release of the twenty-twenty census, particularly for those councils that are in districts, and you may have to redraw the districts, there may be some delay in that. Right now, you are all at large, as you well know, so. But we can double-check that and follow up in an email to y'all.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay. I guess that brings us to Karen. It's time to earn your money.
Okay, Ken, that, I'm gonna stay here. I'll-
Yeah. I mean, he wasn't there.
You know what? I'm kind of, I've kind of felt invisible tonight.
His comments should be brief. He wasn't here.
No, sorry, I had, I had to step out just for transparency purposes. It was for a prosthetics education kind of a group, because I should be able to have the prosthetic by the end of the month. I don't have to hear Mr. McIntyre offer me a hand anymore.
I'm going on vacation, so you need that soon, man.
I need that, I need that soon, because I need your help. This is the first meeting since the Memorial Day ceremony, is it not? I'm losing track of my days. They're running together. Thanks, staff, for putting that together. Hayden did a great job with that. It was very respectful. Appreciate, appreciate that. And glad you gave an update on the parade. I'll have to ask you about that when, when later. Other, other than that, just remember, you know, school's ending. Congratulations to our graduates. And remember when you're driving around, Todd, not to be beeping behind any, anybody. It might cause a little bit of road rage. Watch out for our students that might be crossing the street. You know, you don't get a little squirrel rage there. We won't repeat what I said. But thanks, council. Thanks, staff. Sorry, I had to step out tonight. Abby, thanks for helping, helping me. And Jim, thanks for, you know, I just want to just stress one thing. This council, this elected body, is all about transparency to the people and the truth. And social media and what's posted on social media is not the truth. And when you have elected officials knowing they're coming up on elected terms to try and use intimidation and half answers to get a rise out of people, I'm gonna state publicly, my loyalty is to the people of this town and to this county and not to political intimidation in any way, shape, or form. And if you want to have a conversation with me, you pick up the phone and you call me, not the other way around when you're trying to use intimidation. The elected official knows who they are. If you want the truth and transparency, Indian Trail's at your service. If you want political intimidation, go to Facebook. Thank you, everyone. God bless.
Mr. Head?
Thought it was a very good meeting, and I, I think we're, we've got a lot of good things in our skew going forward and looking forward to, to seeing how it all works out. Everybody have a good evening. Drive home safely.
Mr. Barber?
I'd like to follow up what he said. Union County's got one of the best school systems in the state. And I know my son just graduated. I'd like to congratulate him on his graduation. And I know Captain James has a child that just graduated. Anybody else that did? Did you raise your hand? Hmm, a child graduate or hmm? Oh, congratulations. So to all the graduates, I say congratulations. I like to think, tell my wife happy birthday. It was yesterday. And I like to thank everybody that wished her happy birthday. She's kind of a homebody, so she really likes it when people do that. So yesterday was her birthday, and that means today is officially the day she returns the gifts I gave her. So that's a tradition, let me tell you. So, and also, with Father's Day's coming up, I had a good father. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Father's Day. It's, it's been a blessing for me, and I hope everybody else is blessed with a good father. And, and to those that are good fathers, I thank you on behalf of your child. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Okay, just real quick, I talked to Mr. McCorr the other, yesterday, and he had mentioned something about going, going to a new, the Honey Hunters in Gastonia. That's a base, new baseball team with a new baseball stadium. I'm just suggesting-
Glad you clarified that.
Yeah. If, if, if you want to see what things can do for your town, I've known Gastonia since, I grew up in West Charlotte, so Gastonia wasn't that far away. But they built a little baseball stadium over there, and it's very impressive, man. I mean, it, have, Kim, have you seen it?
I've seen pictures of it. I've seen it a lot.
I, I saw pictures of it, and it's, the pictures of it aren't quite like it because they've got apartments that go around. The apartments aren't built yet, so, but, but the stadium's very nice. Five thousand-seat stadium. But it kind of, it, it was in an area town that, that probably wasn't the best area town, and it's really made it pretty. It's nice. And a lot of things to do. I talked to some of the businesses around there, and it's just made a world of difference. And I suggest to anybody that wants to go look at it, you can see maybe what, you know, what you talked about going and talking and seeing some of these people, what it can do. But I was very impressed. And just suggestion that to everybody. I thank everybody for coming. And I, Adam was so kind to go to my car. I had a, had something in my glove box. And I have something for you, Jim, and it's a chat from the ABC, for ABC.
How much, man? How much?
For forty-two thousand dollars. So that was our, our gift to you for, for last quarter. And everything, I'll give a quick ABC update. It was, it's growing great. Sales are still better than they were last year every month. So people are still drinking, man. I'm telling you, they're, they're doing well. They're drinking a lot. So not necessarily the greatest thing, but they're, they're drinking respectfully at home. So anyway, with that being said, I'll give that to you on the way out. Thanks.
Mr. McIntyre?
I just want to have a little quote here, but based on some of the things that I've heard here. Says, "Be who you are and say what you feel, because those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind." So I like when everybody here speaks their mind, speaks the truth. It was a very good meeting. I think we're making some steps. And I, I think, Mr. McLaurin, you, you and I have had conversations about this where we talk about where Indian Trail was. Many years ago, we had in a sort of a part-time town manager. Now, we have a full-time town manager. We have a town hall, you know, really is a gem. A lot of, you know, different municipalities come here, and they're like, man, this is really nice. We're looking to build Public Works Facility. So there's a lot of changes that we're making here, positive changes, trying to help us kind of get that vision of what we want to see. To your point, you mentioned we couldn't, we can buy a pair of running shoes, can buy a bicycle here. I'll tell you how, as you want. Sometimes I really want to get a good stick. You know, I love stick and can get one here. So hopefully, with things coming, that can change. But I think we're all moving in the right direction. Staff appreciate all your information that you give, you know, being prepared. I'll tell you, I sit here and I feel very prepared when I come to a meeting with the information that I have, even the motions that we have to make. So I do that. Mr. Mayor, I know you do depend on me for that arm, but I'm happy to hear your other arm is coming, so therefore I can take a break. It's been a long, you know, year plus, so.
Yes, it has. It has.
So I do need a vacation.
You're gonna have to come up with a new joke.
Right, but, yep. But thank you, everybody. Appreciate all of you, and have a safe drive home.
And Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about our tax rate. And I did hear through the grapevine that there was some chatter on social media. I'm sorry for those that still use social media. I no longer visit Facebook, haven't for a while. But, you know, one of the things that when we were doing the budget, and it really crossed my mind, was whether or not we were gonna do a revenue neutral and whether we should pursue it and with all the bills and the different things that we're, that we're facing. Then we had a good year, but the, the issue is, is Indian Trail is really growing. And because of that, just like what was said, I'm not sure who said it, but the, you know, Public Works, a Public Works building, I mean, that's, that's been needed for a while, and, and the need's just gonna grow as we bring more people online. So I'm, me, I hate taxes with, with a passion. However, when I see the town staff and council being very deliberate in, in some of the things that we're trying to achieve for the residents of the town, it's gonna come at a cost. And unfortunately, some of the other entities out there haven't been pulling their share, paying their share fair, or fair share. And what I mean by that is, and I'm not taking a shot at DOT, but as we saw, DOT funding has been lacking. And if we do want better roads, better streets, better sidewalks, we're gonna need to pony up. And I'm glad that this council decided to leave the tax rate where it is so that we can achieve those things. Again, or, excuse me, moving on to the past Memorial Day observance there at the Veterans Memorial. It was good seeing council member Todd and the mayor, as well as members of the staff. American Legion was there, and they put on a, had a good presentation in the VFW. And it was, it was a great day for me to be able to take my grandson and, and talk about a few things and not just attribute it to a picnic and a good time. He got to do that the night before at the race, which was the race, but Memorial Day is Memorial Day. And, and I'm very thankful to all those families and, and surviving members of families who lost their loved ones so that we can do the things that we do in this United States without any fear. We had a gentleman that's spoken a couple of times regarding some of the, the, I'll call it melting pot issues here in, in Indian Trail. And we do have a big Hispanic population, and it's growing, and we do have Asian community. And I think it is beneficial that, that we have some kind of in place for the town. And I don't really know how to express this, but where, if we do have someone that is speaking Lebanese and they do need to, need services from the town, that there is a structure in place that we can get them, the, you know-